We thought that was important, so came just to talk a little bit. Appreciate the comments, the school district, some of our concerns. It's not that we're against growth, we just like managed growth. As said, you know, in our buildings, especially at the elementary level, we're at the borderline class size. Every year we're juggling classrooms at the elementary level, so. And that's with three parochial elementary schools feeding the school district. So take that into consideration also. You know, a few of the things that, you know, we've talked about, you know, we've talked about the 15-year TIF. You know, could we maybe reduce that seven to 10 years as far as the payback? You know, we've talked about property taxes. Seward basically receives no state aid other than mandated programs. So our only means of covering the cost is through property taxes. And just like Thomas said, I don't have the answer for it. I've got my opinions, but most of them at the state level don't like your my opinions, so. So that is, you know, one possibility. If we're talking about affordable housing, and I agree there's a need for housing in the county, but I think that's a county problem, not just the city of Seward problem. Not everybody, you know, take myself for example. I live out in the country. Not everybody wants to live in Seward, but we all, if our kids go here, we come here, we spend money here, the tax money comes and stuff. So I think the city does get some of that benefit from the school being in the city of Seward. You know, if we're looking at affordable housing, you know, one concern, would we guarantee the lot price, you know, for this? So that, you know, as they sell out, the prices don't go up because of the demand. We like managed growth on our end. You know, it's easier for us to project out five, 10, 15 years down the road, the needs of our facilities. You know, can we stick to a commitment, timeline commitment for the phases of this project? You know, is there potential, you know, for the help by the city for the infrastructure in this product? Project, you know, they're able to recoup some of the utilities. And through that stuff, we're, on our end, on the school district, then the only way we have for our increased costs is by all the taxpayers of the school district. Again, we don't want to come across as anti-growth. And we feel like that Seward is an attractive community. Seward is an attractive school district, and people want to live here. And, but also think that those are some of the issues to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And just to kind of echo some of what Paul said, we, I had a meeting with Paul previously, and one of the things that we did discuss was, you know, making sure that we are addressing whatever that need is in a very specific way that we don't. We don't take too broad of a brush when it comes to meeting back to that need that's out there. So I think Paul makes a really good point from the school district's perspective as well. Does anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Yes, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make a couple of brief points here. In this came up at the planning commission meeting last night. Really, the question was, what sort of a demand do we have from people that are commuting into? The community, I'll give a quick example. We do a simple zip code analysis of our three largest employers. You may have heard me say this before. This is between Hughes Brothers, Tenneco, Concordia University, and Seward. They pull from 20 counties where they're full-time employees. About 45% of those employees, which is about 1,230 employees in this study back in 2019, come from outside of the county. So not that everybody's going to choose to live in Seward, you know, if we provide a housing price product like this, but it at least gives them some other options for the type of housing that they may consider to choose to live here in the community. So the thought then is, they're not just working here, they potentially could also live and play here as well. I want to echo Zane's comments about the need for workforce housing. Specifically, that's the term that we think of in our economic development chamber world. And I just want to add that our local employers are hiring. We had a conversation with Tenneco a couple of weeks ago. And although things are cyclical in the auto manufacturing industry, they stated they're planning to hire 25 new employees between welders and machinists here in the near future. And the reality is that that would be workforce. The sort of people that they need to fill those jobs, and they're good wages. But from a practical standpoint, we would need housing that's kind of in that workforce specific to help encourage them to live here. Also, Pet Source, of course, continues to hire. When we did the ribbon cutting here recently, you know, they're at 45 employees. Their stated goal has always been to get to 100 employees. The goal for them is to get there by 2021. So they're continuing to hire as they ramp up production. So there's obviously some room for growth for existing employers, just as two examples. And so ideally, again, we're able to encourage those employees to work, live, and play here in the same community. And then ultimately, this helps with retention for talent for local area employers, and it gives us an opportunity to support local businesses through having more people doing that work, live, and play. In talking with developers around the states, many other communities have used TIF for housing. And I think Andrew could probably share some of those examples from his significant work with TIF around the state. I do want to mention, too, I think this is really worth noting. I really see Thomas as a homegrown developer. A lot of communities do not have, you know, people that are willing to, you know, put their money invested back in the community that they call home. So I think this is, this does matter. It does matter that people are willing to make those investments. And so I just want to compliment he and his investor group that are considering this sort of investment in our community. And I think that is worth noting, that we have a local developer looking to make this sort of an investment. With that said, I did, last point that I'll make is that we, the council approved the four residential lot subdivisions here over the last year plus. To my knowledge, about three out of those four are almost out of lots from the four that were approved. And so the reality is, we have about one left here that has room for continued residential lot sales. And so this is a potential as an additional residential subdivision to sell off, to keep up with that approximately 30 homes per year that we typically build here within the community. So with that, would appreciate consideration for this. Again, within the context of the housing study, this seems to fit with the demand that has been identified. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Do you want someone public wish to comment on this item?
Yes. Brittany Lewis, 2596 Redwood Road. Just have a little statement I'd like to read. I agree that Seward is in need of additional affordable housing. The question seems to be, should TIF be approved to get it? And after attending a portion of the planning commission meeting last night, several valid concerns were raised while I was there, most of which have been discussed. I'd like to briefly run through them. Will it set a precedent for other developers to apply, as you mentioned? What will be the impact on the near-capacity school system? What will the impact be on Highway 15, traffically reported, reportedly at 10,000 cars a day? Already highway access from Birch's and already, in an already heavily-used area with Walmart, the new larger Orshuns, Casey's, McDonald's, a large church, the City Burn area, Tenneco workers, and the developing rail yard campus. It is a traffic nightmare out there. You know, you have to, you take your life in your own hands getting through there at certain times of the day because there're yield signs, stop signs. People don't read what they are, don't understand that, I guess. And the increase in property valuations on homeowners, struggling already due to the economic downturn from the COVID virus. If the Arrowhead investors feel strongly about the success of their project, and I think they would have great success. They might consider downsizing the project to a level they can afford to deal without TIF money. And I think the houses would sell, personally. From what I understand of those four recent housing developments, and like you said, there's three that have filled up without TIF money. So I'm not sure what their hesitation is about thinking they can also have a wonderful project without TIF money. And again, it's only the first of several TIF applications that they will be requesting over the next few years. So from my understanding, that goes back to the taxpayers eventually to kind of pick up on that. So I'm just hoping that, you know, at this time, you just kind of take a moment, look at everything, consider what everybody's going through because of COVID. Money's tight everywhere, so. But I do see the need for progress in Seward, too. So it's kind of like torn between which way to go. So I just ask that you think about this seriously before you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Shane?
Shane Bach, 1660 Augusta Drive. I'm also a partner with Thomas on this project. I'm not going to elaborate on a lot of stuff, but just a couple of things I wanted to mention tonight. You know, the property today as it sits is industrial. So I think we need to decide as a community what we really want to see in this area. If you look at it as industrial, there's a lot of permitted uses that I'm not sure our community wants that to be. It would also, it would also increase some of the area, you know, traffic in that area if we brought a 300-person employer to that area. And so I think that's, you know, what we have to do. From our standpoint as a developer, we looked at the comprehensive plan as the playbook to put this development together. And so when we looked at the South 15 development, you know, we really saw that as an opportunity, and that's why we went that route. As Thomas mentioned, you know, we have, we're trying to listen to the community and what the wants and needs are. When you looked at the original plan, it was row housing. Get as many as you can jam in there. And we heard feedback from people that that's not what the community wanted. And so I hope you understand that we really did take, and we are taking a lot of feedback that is coming at us and trying to maneuver and put this plan together so it's for the benefit of our community. Couple of other things that was talked about tonight. You know, are we as developers willing to put restrictions or maximums on the amount of lot price? And I think we're willing to do some of those types of things. But what we have to be careful with is, you know, putting maximum prices on the houses. You know, we saw a 40% spike in the third quarter in lumber prices. That's not in our control as a developer. But if we put those in as restrictive covenants, that makes it difficult for us to, you know, move the property and get things done the way that need to be done. So I want us to be a little bit cognizant of that as we look at restricted covenants. The other thing, as Jonathan mentioned, as local developers, you know, we live, we work, we play, we go to church with all of you in the room. And if we come in with the idea that we're only in this to make money, we're not going to be a business very long. And we do want to see the savings passed on to the home builders, to the, you know, people. I look at, you know, who we're trying to attract. It's the new teachers, it's the new nurses that we're trying to recruit to our community. It's the Concordia professors that we're trying to recruit. It's the workforce for the largest employers. And not everybody can afford a $300,000-plus house. And we just want to provide an opportunity for that to happen because ultimately, that helps our community grow and thrive into the future. One last comment. You know, when you look at other communities, in bigger communities in fact, like Elkhorn and Omaha, you know, and I know they use a little bit different structure with SIDs and those types of things. But the dependence on everybody else in the school district is lessened by increasing the tax base. And so one of the things that we hope this does, and it's not going to be an immediate impact, but if we can increase the tax base over time, it also reduces the reliance on everybody else, you know, around us. And so you see that. You know, Omaha, Elkhorn, those types of communities have really developed a lot of commercial, which has helped their property taxes on their residential somewhat, okay? And so we're hoping that this project will ultimately help with that down the road as well. So thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I would add, and I appreciate your point regarding the covenances and what that could look like. I just think, from what I've heard from discussions regarding using TIF, is if we're essentially asking, you're essentially asking for the city to subsidize to some extent the development. If someone goes in there and buys a lot for a relatively inexpensive price but builds a $400,000 home, I don't think the council will be really happy about the use of subsidizing that project. Now, I understand costs of materials go up. But I think, just so you understand, I think that's the concern of not having a limit is, or to my original point, is are we really addressing the need? And if someone can go in and buy a lot and then build a $350,000, $400,000 home, I don't think that's the target that Zane and Jonathan were talking about in their market step. So just, so that's out there, so we're on kind of the same page. So just take Thomas into that.
I would say the same thing about us, though. That's not our target market either.
Right, but I'm just saying, that's why the discussion of covenances takes place, because that's the one way, that one safeguard, you know, and to my point earlier with Andrew, would be, provide us what a list of those kinds of options look like, just so that everyone's comfortable. Because if the council pulls the trigger after the CRA makes recommendation, it's gone. I mean, the horse is out of the barn. And there needs to be a certain level, I think, of confidence by the council and others that what they think is going to happen is actually going to happen. And the issue we're trying to address actually gets addressed. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thomas?
Yeah, so that's a good point. And I think we're willing to look at, you know, covenants, and we're open to that concept. I think something that Shane brought up, you know, is a good point with, I mean, again, lumber prices, the way that they spiked, and then just obviously the increase in price year after year on other things as well, and inflation and things like that. You know, the last thing we want to do is say, okay, we're going to cap this at 300,000, but then, you know, five years from now, 300,000 is the new, they're the now 200,000. You know, we just can't predict that.
But can we, can we build that in, just like there's an inflation rate?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Why can't we build that in?
And just to be clear, too, I mean, when you would, if this were to go forward and you came back with your second phase proposal, that could all be renegotiated, and those numbers can all be adjusted accordingly. So it is fluid in the sense that we should be able to adjust as if that truly is the case.
And that was the next point I was going to bring up, is this is a, you know, 29 lots out of, you know, hopefully 120 lot development. And so we're not, we're not going into this asking you guys to basically approve all these, you know, all these phases at once. We're, you know, purposely doing this so that, you know, we're proving to you guys that, hey, we can do this at this price point, and that this is actually what we're going to do. Because at the end of the day, if we don't, if we don't execute on that and do what we're saying we're going to do, well, then obviously, we're not going to most likely get TIF out of you guys moving forward with the other subdivisions. And so I think that's a safeguard in itself.
Yeah, and I think that with moving forward in the future, you know, if the first phase were approved, there could be unintended consequences or things none of us thought about that come up. It's okay, that's something we need to address in the next phase. And I think generally speaking, as long as that's a minor course correction, I don't necessarily know that that would be a problem. It's just if it's a huge course correction because all the worst-case scenarios came true, then I think that's a much bigger issue.
And I would say if you came to the council with 129 lots, whatever it is, at once for TIF, I doubt this discussion goes very far. So we would want to see the controlled growth and call it the trust but verify. Yes, we hope, as I said before, you need to make this work for everyone. And if it works for everyone, your development continues to phase two. It continues to phase three, unless we run into those majorities that surfaced during the first phases. So we need to find a common ground, otherwise it's not going to work.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. You can't just go put TIF on any subdivision. It has to be in the area, correct?
Well, you can't, yes and no. I mean, in order for it to qualify, it has to be in the, in the light of standard map. But that map can be adjusted. The reason, I mean, Thomas brought this up initially in his presentation, that this is really the only large area that would work for residential. But that's because the original map was designed.
But we would be the ones to move the map.
Correct, but the original map was designed for.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
But the original map was designed for commercial in the sense that we're looking at businesses that might need, you know, those properties within the corridor as well as downtown. So the original map wasn't designed with residential in mind, which is why you have very little areas for residential. That could be adjusted in the future.
But we do have on the comprehensive plan to have residential in that area.
We do, but it's not, yes.
It's currently I-1, but in the comprehensive plan.
They address that possible area for future residential development, as well as, I believe, north and east.
I understand. But if it is in the plan, it's allowed in the plan, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, the plan's not like a statute. I mean, it's not a requirement, but yes, that was what was addressed. That was, the plan looks at what can be used for this use and that use. And yes, this was an area that was identified potentially for residential.
Yep. Any other comments or questions from the council? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item?
On LV496 back in April of 2018, which allows small communities to start using TIF for redevelopment? I don't know if this is any information, or if anybody can explain this to me, but it says, under the new law, workforce housing is defined as owner-occupied homes that cost less than $275,000 to construct. So we're here, we're talking about inflation and such.
Yeah, so LV, that's a little different. So that bill actually allows, in certain circumstances, for the use of TIF to actually build the homes. Typically, the other, this was the other piece when we're talking about using TIF, is you have to have TIF-eligible uses. That's your public infrastructure, all those pieces. So that law was another piece that actually expanded TIF further to say, if you have a, you know, a housing study that shows this, you know, that meets a lot of different criteria, you can actually use TIF to pay for the construction of the home. So that's not what's happening here. So that's a different one that adds, that would take it even further.
And that was in my earlier comment about how some communities are really struggling to get people to move in and be able to afford houses. And so that was something that was passed in legislature to really, well, I think narrowly, as narrowly as they could, try to address the very specific issue for that.
Unrelated, but we'll talk about a TIF law that just went back a couple of days ago, allows for micro-TIFs. And one of them is the idea that you can, if you want to just go renovate a home, like if you want to renovate your home and it's in a light and substandard area, there's an expedited process to go through faster than the approval of a TIF for a 10-year TIF at a smaller, so again, they're just, they're trying to do things that.
Don't complicate this, Andrew.
Unrelated to anything we're talking about.
Take your micro-TIF. Any other one, anyone else who hasn't spoken yet, want an opportunity to speak on this item? If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this and return to the council for any additional question or comments. Keep in mind, there is no action to be taken this evening. So if you have anything else you want to say, that's fine, too. We will move on to the next item. But before we do that, are we all good?
I have one question. Are you guys planning on doing like HOAs or anything like that for this?
Yeah, good question. We're looking into it. Again, this is just, you know, a first phase of many for us. And so that is one of the steps that we are looking into, but that is not defined yet.
Anyone else? Yes, Jonathan?
I just, so everyone's clear, I know we've had discussions about this, but if that road, if Highway 15 does become an issue, who's on the hook for doing all the expansion and stuff? Like if that road was to have to be expanded?
It typically is between the state and the city, but Greg, would you want?
It depends on, the easy answer is it's the city. That's the easy answer. As Highway 15 runs through, and 34 for that matter, runs through the city limits, we're in charge of the maintenance and the upkeep, and then ultimately, the expansion of that, unless it's involved in a state project. Where we, for instance, the resurfacing and bridge work that took place in 2017 in the summer, the upcoming resurfacing and construction work that will go through the middle of town for Highway 15 to clean that up, those are state-funded projects. We have minimal cost in those. But something like this is similar to the rail campus, where we were tasked with adding turn lanes, and ultimately, when traffic hits a certain point, we already know we're on the hook to widen the bridge again, and then also install a traffic signal at that intersection, when it warrants. Now, the problem with that is when it warrants is not dictated in any way, shape, or form by the city. It's entirely dictated by the state. And so the state, we may say, hey, we have all these traffic issues. State, we need to do something about it. And they'll say, we did a study, or it doesn't warrant a study, or whatever it is, and it's completely fine, okay? Or they may come back and we think, no, things seem great. There's no traffic issues down there. And they come in and go, we counted traffic. You need a traffic line, turn lanes, go put them in. You have X number of years to get it done. And so it's kind of out of our hands in regards to what happens on the highways, in regards to growth and traffic flow and everything else. Obviously, we can always make requests. One of the biggest ones, we talked about planning zoning the other night, is to reduce issues along this corridor, is actually just reducing speed. As you continue to see more and more traffic and turning, traffic and things like that, is you'll see NDOT come in and do a traffic study, and all they'll do is go, all right, this warrants, it only needs to be 45 through here now. And that's some of the different things that they'll look at when they start making decisions about what's going on in relation to traffic out there. Another one that came up last night, just for consideration. I know Councilmember Wilkins' concern is especially Birch. But Cottonwood also, due to the fact that Cottonwood doesn't go out to the highway, it's not a through street, but it's intended on both the plan here and long-term to be through. And so we could request, because it's just an access point to the highway, we could request from NDOT to realign some of those access points, and then make Cottonwood the actual access point to the highway, and then make it a through area, so it's not doing a lot of this on Progressive and things like that, that can cause traffic issues like the yield signs and things like that that people don't pay attention to. And so that's the, that's the traffic part. But the city is on the hook if we get too far down and we don't have a joint planned state project coming through. And I think the most recent one, other than the resurfacing, was probably a consideration to go to four lanes years and years ago, and that went away.
Any other questions that come to the council? Seeing none?
My, I know we had that question. My big thing, I kind of feel like the moderator of this, between me and Andrew, is between now and the next time this goes to the CRA, it will not go back to planning and zoning unless something drastic were to happen where we felt like we had modified it substantially. Planning and zoning approved, recommended approval last night of this as it relates to the planning element of it, and being in conformity with the comprehensive plan. As we go back to the CRA, probably within the next 30 days, we're going to get together with interested parties, school district, interested council members on some of these issues, and see what can be hammered out that we know that was brought up either here or by the CRA, and try to work through some of those items and see where we end up. Again, the recommendation of the CRA was to really hear what came out in public hearing, what questions and concerns you had, so that they can attempt to have those looked at and addressed over the next 30 days, so that when we bring it back to the CRA, we don't get surprised where somebody goes, well, what about this idea? When we could have, you had that floating around right now. So whether it's tonight and on the record, or shortly thereafter, if you have questions or concerns about this project, we really want to shake those out now, so that we take it back to the CRA and they vote on it. They felt like we shook out as much as we, I call it shaking the tree, just to see what falls out. And so it's really important that we do that, so that this doesn't get prolonged. I know that developers, you know, talked about the timelines and things like that, but I want to really make sure that we do our due diligence and do a lot of good work over the next 30 days before we go back to the CRA. So again, whether it's tonight, or issues you have that you want us to look into before the CRA meeting, or should this come to council? Because that's. Because that's the other thing, that the CRA votes us down, this will not come back to you. That will be the end of it. So, uh, it's kind of the lay of the land, and so, I just want to reiterate that, uh, that that's what the plan is. So, if you do have something, either put it on the record tonight, or get ahold of me shortly hereafter, so we can start following up on it.
Thanks, Greg, and thank you, Andrew.
Carl was going to ask.
I'd say the only thing that I haven't heard is the wastewater impact. I know we're close to pushing limits on sewer and all the rest of, and talking expansion, some of the other things, what is the impact of this going to be? And that's not achieved.
No. And ultimately, again, that one's in the plan to be, we're going out for an RFQ probably this winter, to select a engineering firm to design the final plant that will replace our current wastewater treatment facility. Again, that one's in the plan no matter what, it's probably just whether we can hold on in regards to capacities before that's built.
It's really a timing issue, with my, with my thought.
Because it's coming no matter what, we have to build it, so. Uh, but it's just not overloading the system before we get to that point. But the other one is you guys approved.
But don't build fast when you need to, if you get a project.
Yeah, the other one is that we're going to have some substantial buy time because of the outfall project that you guys approved this winter. Uh, by moving that outfall, that project will kick off here this spring. That will buy us quite a bit of time, because we'll get substantially increased permitting for wastewater.
Thanks, Greg, and thank you, Andrew, and that will move on to the next item.
One, one last thing, because I don't think this is, I don't think that either, but, um, just because I was on the, I'm on the CRA, and that with the Finance and Audit Committee as well, um, there is no crossing that goes out to that area either, which is also one of the concerns that we intend to discuss, meaning that it's a road that's 55, it's two-lane, there's no pedestrian lockway into the city. That does pose an issue.
Thank you, and with that, we'll move on to item number three. This is also a public hearing, this is an ordinance updating the Unified Land Development Ordinance, the ULDO, rezone the Durepy addition from Ag, Agricultural District to Rural Residential District. Greg?
All right, let me make sure I got all my stuff here. This one essentially is a, is a kind of a combination, at the time that it happened with planning and zoning. Uh, these two additions, this one and the one that will follow, are out east of town. Uh, they're rural residential divisions into, uh, acreage lots off of what would, as you'll see with the rezon was ag. Uh, to get them down to kind of larger acreages versus ag, which requires 20 acres, you need to have it rezoned. And so, the plat, because those are minor plats, only goes to P&amp;Z, but the rezon from ag to rural residential comes to both P&amp;Z and the City Council for that amendment. Um, I believe we included, the notice of public hearing, and that's extraterritorial jurisdiction information. And so, uh, both of these items, uh, were considered by P&amp;Z, there's no issues up with dividing them out, uh, out to the east of town in the extraterritorial two-mile jurisdiction. And so, uh, both approved unanimously, I think we have one of the property owners here with us tonight, but, uh, not a substantial burden for the city, so we recommend approval.
Thanks, Greg, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item, please indicate now. Seeing no one from the public wishing to comment on this item, I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any questions or comments on this item?
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right. In order to amend the official zoning map of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to rezon certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Seward, Nebraska, now zoned at Ag Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District, specifically tracts of land north of Fletcher Road and west of the 252th Road, to describe the property rezoned to provide for publication in this ordinance and pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title, this is designated as ordinance number 2020-29, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with such to a rule.
Second.
The motion in a second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
This is ordinance number 2020-29, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So moved.
The motion in a second, need for discussion? Seeing none, again, the question is, your ordinance number 2020-29 be finally passed and adopted, please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
All right, item number four, this is also a public hearing, this is an ordinance updating the Unified Land Development Ordinance, ULDO, rezoned the Van Zoff addition from Ag Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District, correct?
Uh, very same thing, this one's actually a division into two properties versus the prior one, which was into multiple acreages. Um, this one just cuts off a house from an, uh, agricultural land. And so, this one was heard by planning and zoning a little over a week ago, and was recommended unanimously, no one spoke in opposition.
And thanks, Greg, this is a public hearing, so I'll now open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on item number four? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing, return to the council for any other questions or comments. Or would someone like to introduce the order?
I'll introduce the order.
In order to amend the official zoning map of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to rezon certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Seward, Nebraska, now zoned Ag Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District, specifically tracts of land south of Blood Road and east of 238th Road, to describe the property rezoned to provide for publication in this ordinance and pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title, this designated as ordinance number 2020-30, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with such to a rule.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, is ready for discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
This is ordinance number 2020-30, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, need for discussion? Seeing none, the question is, your ordinance number 2020-30 be finally passed and adopted, please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Item number five is also a public hearing, discussion of text amendment to the city of Seward Unified Land Development Ordinance, ULDO, Chapter 410, zoning and subdivision, Article 31.5, commercial uses and attachment one, use matrix of valid convenience of storage, Greg?
Yes, this was an application that actually came to us from Cash Investments, the Hendricks. It's on note, we have a conflict, correct, Felissa?
Yeah, I need to abstain, please.
Yep, there we go, so I'll, I'll walk us through this one. Um, the property over at 139 Sixth Street, the old Fastenal area, the, the discussion that was had was utilizing that downtown area to, for indoor self-storage. And so, you've seen some of these maybe in Lincoln and other places, where they have storage units that are smaller than your traditional garage door storage unit, but they're kept inside, uh, climate-controlled area versus out in the elements. Uh, security doors, security locks to get into each unit. And so, currently under the current ULDO, convenience storage, which is what it best fit under, sometimes you have to put it where it best fits, uh, convenience storage in any way was not a permitted use, not by special use permit or otherwise. And so, uh, the applicant at the time filed for this ULDO amendment, and we brought it forth, the planning and zoning had discussion of it last night. As you can see with what we amended there, one of the first things is, is that we noted, uh, there's a landscaping change under what we define as Section F. And so, we just noted that there, the landscaping requirements don't apply, because in Central Business District, we have zero setbacks, there's no landscaping, so that's not an issue. And then, the amendment to Section 6 within the Central Business District, all storage units must be contained within an enclosed building structure. The purpose for that is so somebody didn't use the outside of a downtown building to have garage doors and otherwise to just store stuff in. You actually have to go in the building, and those are where the units are located, to maintain basically the normal aspects and look of downtown buildings within the Central Business District, so we're not basically just permitting storage buildings. Um, the other one, I know from the applicant's perspective, is they're looking at, it will have basically a commercial, uh, space in the front, and then the design would have the storage further back behind that and on a different floor, so, um, that's, that's kind of the gist of it, and, uh, this was approved unanimously last night by planning and zoning after they reviewed it. And so, I can answer any questions or concerns you have.
Thanks, Greg. Um, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing on this item. Anyone from the public wish to comment on item number five? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any questions or comments on item number five? Or would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
All right, in order to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, Chapter 410, zoning and subdivision, Article 31, supplemental use and development regulations to better define commercial uses, and Article 4, use matrix to allow convenience storage within the Central Business District, to repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, to provide for an effective date, to provide for publication in this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title, this designated as ordinance number 2020-31, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with such to a rule.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
The motion in a second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Abstain.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
This is ordinance number 2020-31, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, need for discussion? Seeing none, the question is, your ordinance number 2020-31 be finally passed and adopted, please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Abstain.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Next, other administrative items, number one, ordinance approving text amendment to the city of Seward Unified Land Development Ordinance, ULDO, Article 29, FP/FW, flood lane slash floodway overlay district, third and final reading. Do we have to read it then at this time first, and then have discussion?
Yeah, is that fine, Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay. In order to repeal or replace the municipal code of the city of Seward, Chapter 410, zoning and subdivision, Article 29, FP/FW, flood lane slash floodway overlay district, to repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, to provide for an effective date, to provide for publication in this ordinance in pamphlet form. This has been the third reading, um, so do we just need someone at this point?
Well, so what we'll need to do, and Kelly can help us, we'll need to, if we have it, I think we've introduced the ordinance.
Yeah, we can move for adoption.
And then we need to amend, because that was the purpose of doing the three readings, we have an amendment here that will have you guys adopt the amendment, and then you'll be able to vote on the final bill if the amendment passes. Again, remember, this was the one where planning and zoning wanted it to amend something just specifically related to modular homes and mobile homes. And they got that cleaned up last week at P&amp;Z, and unanimously approved the amended version to you. Uh, but due to the fact of when their meetings were held, we wanted to make sure we got the public hearing taken care of, they're back on the first reading. So, that's why we did the three readings, to kind of give planning and zoning time to finish that up, which they did.
So, do we need to approve an amendment, or can we go ahead and, and, and ask the question, should, should this ordinance be finally passed and adopted?
Do we do the amendment first, then come?
Oh, we do the amendment first.
Okay.
Okay, that is still a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion in a second, need for discussion? Need clarification, we're good? Okay, the motion in a second, please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
Now we've adopted the amendment, then I can, the question is, your ordinance number 2020-2070 finally passed and adopted, correct?
As amended.
As amended. Please.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so now we state that, the question is, your ordinance number 2020-2070 finally passed and adopted, please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
All right, now we've trudged our way through that, that's the last ordinance, thank God, for the evening. Any one final motion to make all the ordinances apart of the permanent record?
So moved.
Uh, Jessica, you won? Oh, John said this?
Laughing, actually.
Okay.
I said so moved.
Okay.
Also, there's so many.
Yeah. Singleton?
I'm dragging this out, Josh.
What's that?
I'm dragging this out.
I know, right? Um, please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
All right. Item number two, amendment number two to the automated metering agreement between the city and Nebraska Public Power District, Greg?
Uh, this just sets up, this is our kind of final walkaway, uh, from our AMI system, our TWAC system that we have in place now as we transition to the AMI. We got laughed at. Uh, so as we move away from that TWAC system, and, and we've approved the bids for both our water and electric meter systems that will be automated meter infrastructure, we need to transition, we also from NPPD, as they were housing and storing all the software and everything related to the TWAC system, this amendment allows for that, basically, it moves all the costs now for that system onto the city, because NPPD has already removed themselves from TWACs. And so, that's where we're at right now, and this just continues the process of us going, going solo for our metering system.
What's the system called?
Stop it.
It's called TWACs.
Got it, thank you. Any questions or comments? So, I give a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do you approve?
Yes.
You have a second? Who's going to get a second?
I'll give the TWAC, I'll give the second.
Okay, whoever, that's fine. Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
All right, item number three, maintenance renewal agreements, number 28 with Nebraska Department of Transportation, Greg?
Just the requirements for our maintenance and upkeep of the highways, uh, for our portions of those, so, do that every year.
Any questions or comments, or was anything a motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second? Please call the roll.
Beck? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
All right, next we have a resolution authorizing Mayor Eitmer to sign the annual year-end certification of city's street superintendent, Greg?
Uh, every year, we certify this, uh, as you'll see the designation next, uh, we always have to have a street superintendent, as that title is designated by the state, that's an official title with certain credentials. Uh, this year again, we will be designating Julie Ogden with JEO, uh, who has served as our, uh, street superintendent designate since Mel's retirement. And so, uh, Bob Myers is in the process of taking those credential classes and getting his studies done, but COVID has made that a little hard this year, they don't offer it as often as they used to. Um, but, so we'll do the year-end certification, then we have a street superintendent, and then on the next motion, uh, we will appoint Julie.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Any questions or comments from the council, or someone like to introduce the resolution? Thanks Greg, any questions or comments from the council, or someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Resolution has been introduced and is designated as Resolution number twenty twenty dash forty-two. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion is a second, please call the roll.
Greg? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Item number five, designate Julie A. Ogden, J E O Consulting Group Incorporated as consultant to the city of Seward as a Class A city street superintendent, license number S dash fourteen oh seven for NDOT programming requirements and incentive payments effective January one, twenty twenty-one, Greg?
Just I explained before, we have to have a street superintendent.
Any questions or comments, or was your team in motion?
Don't move.
The motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Greg? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Item number six, updated master agreement for professional services with Olson for on-call services, correct?
Uh, it's just our master agreement with Olson, this is what we utilize when we have small projects that are not like major capital projects. Hey, we're working on this little thing, we need some engineering done, or some surveying work, whatever else, so.
Thanks Greg, any questions or comments from the council, or any urgent motion?
Move through.
The motion is a second, please call the roll.
Greg? Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Item seven, amendment to the rules and regulations for sewer cemeteries, adding temporary markers and updating text, correct?
Yep, you have a draft version, I think a final version? Uh, just a draft version, but it has all the relative crossouts and new language. Pursuant to our presentation at the last meeting by our gentlemen that worked out at the cemetery, one of the biggest changes we have here is the rules for temporary markers, and then it's just some cleanup items that have been reviewed by the cemetery board and administration.[1671.02]